Good evening. My name is Kathleen Berg and I will be your moderator for this League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. Welcome to the Candidates, the audience, New Cat, KNUJ, and the local media which is New Ulm Journal, who is a sponsor of this meeting this evening. The League is a nonpartisan organization which promotes active and informed involvement of citizens in the voting process. The League does not support or oppose political parties or individual candidates. The League has called this meeting for the purpose of assisting the public in making their choices among candidates for the office of City Councilor Ward One. The candidates for Ward One are Dave Christian and Jane Mayday-Holkey. Charles Schmitz is a Councilor-at-Large and Les Schultz is running for Ward Three. The City Council administers the business of the city and the council meets twice a month. Questions for the candidates will be gathered from several sources, including the TV and radio audience and live audience. The television and radio audience is asked to call 507-276-6211 with their questions. The League reserves the right to screen questions that are illegible on personal matters unrelated to the elective position, unclear, inappropriately hostile, antagonistic, belligerent, friendly, supportive, or gratuitous, or that are submitted for the purpose of making a statement rather than gaining information. Questions on one issue or similar issues will be consolidated and rephrased. Our intention in screening questions is to, in good faith, select questions that represent the interests of those persons that submit these questions. If anyone in the audience feels an issue has not been adequately addressed, we urge that that person contact the candidate directly. The ground rules for this evening's Candidates Meeting are as follows. Charles Schmitz and Les Schultz are running unopposed for their seats. They will be given two minutes to introduce themselves and will not be asked any further questions, and I would ask when they have completed their portion of this meeting to please join the audience. I will go on after that to ask Dave Christian and Jane Mayday-Holkey to spend a maximum of one minute thirty seconds introducing themselves. The order of introduction has been established alphabetically. An official timekeeper will mark the time. Upon completion of the introductions, each candidate will respond to one question that was drafted by the League and provided to the candidates in advance of this evening's forum. Thereafter, the meeting will be opened to questions from the audience, including phoned-in questions. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to these questions. And the timekeepers are sitting right up front here. Will you please take note when they do tell you to suspend your talk? If a question is addressed to an individual candidate, that candidate will be given the opportunity to respond first. The other candidate will also have an opportunity to speak to the question if they so choose. The same two-minute time limit applies. The ushers will distribute paper to the audience present, and the TV and radio audience, like I said earlier, may phone in their questions at 507-276-6211. Your call will be answered by League members. Again, questions will be screened. At the end of the meeting, the candidates will give a one-minute closing statement. The order will be the reverse of the introductions. We will bring the meeting to a close by eight P.M. Questions are now being accepted from the TV and local audience. We will now proceed with the two representatives of our City Council that are running unopposed, and they will give us a two-minute talk. First one will be Councilor-at-Large Charles Schmitz.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to be here tonight and I guess explain why I'm interested in being on the City Council. I joined, I ran for the City Council eight years ago, and I'm completing my eighth year. Throughout those past eight years, I missed one council meeting, which is, I think, doing pretty good. I don't expect it of everybody to do that, but the really, only reason I missed it is because I was on a fishing trip up in Canada, and I was, actually, I made it back, and I got back about ten minutes before the meeting started, so I called Pinky and I watched it from home. But when I ran for the position of President of the City Council, I ran because I was interested in it, and that's why I put so much time and effort into it. It actually takes more time than a guy really thought when he ran, because I didn't realize all the different committees that you belong on and all the meetings that you do attend, so it really, to the candidates that are running, it really have to be devoted, because you do spend a lot of time and a lot of effort, so. But it's rewarding, because when you go into a grocery store and somebody comes up to you and pats you on the back and says, "God, you did a great job. I like it. Keep it up," and so on and forth, that's rewarding. You also get those that come up to you and say, "Well, could you do this? Could you do that?" Or, "I didn't like the way you did this," or whatever. But the people in New Ulm are wonderful people. They're cordial. I have never had anybody cuss swear or anything at me. It's just been great. And I guess that's one reason I'm going to continue to run. And the other reason is also is, which, a couple nights ago, I had a meeting with the League of, uh, not the League of Minnesota, with Region Nine, and this attorney out of Minneapolis was up, and he was making a comment on the lack of people running. There's over two dozen cities in the state of Minnesota that nobody's running for mayor. There's over two hundred and some seats for City Council that nobody's running for. So, I think it's awkward pretty quick.
Alarm sounded.
So, what we do need is people that are interested in the city government, and hopefully throughout the next years or so that we spend a little more effort to city to maybe get the younger people more involved with city government, so that's one of the things I'm going to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. And our third Ward City Councilman, Les Schultz.
Thank you, and good evening, and, once again, thanks to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum tonight. I currently sit as Vice President of the City Council, and I currently chair the New Ulm Cable Television Commission. I sit on, the Chamber Board is an ex-officio member, back to the City Council, and I sit on the EDA Board, and I also chair a Committee for Enhancing Childcare. It's kind of a subcommittee of the City Council. My goals for this next four years are to really take a serious look at our affordable housing. We have a very lack of housing for our lower-income folks in our community, and we also have a very serious need of increasing our industrial park, and I think that's my two top concerns for the next four years to address. So I would appreciate your support and vote this coming fall, and we, I think our council does a fairly good job of keeping our taxes low and spending conservatively, so, once again, I would appreciate your support this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. We will now go on to the, would you please step aside? Sorry to do that to you. But your job is finished tonight. If you want to go home, you can go home and watch it on TV. The candidates will now present their opening remarks, and we'll begin with Dave Christian.
She's already said my name, but I did want to make mention this evening, my full name, David Harry Christian. I'm named after my father. Okay, my wife and I, Deborah, we have five children. We live at 401 South Front, located down by the river. We do enjoy living there. We raised five children. We still have one at home who is a junior in high school, attending public school. Most of you know I retired from the city after working twenty-eight full-time years and two years part-time. Some of my hobbies, I enjoy to hunt and I enjoy to fish. Chose to retire on the river for that main reason. I really like spending time on the Minnesota River. One other item I do like to do in winter, I have a hobby, I like to make wood crafts. I like to recycle old barns, greenery's chicken coops. I take that and make furniture out of it. It's a pastime and it's enjoyable to do. In my younger years, I did devote a lot of time with, in the city of New Ulm. I remember coaching. I coached hockey, youth baseball, did my stint with the girls softball. I've always come to the fame that I actually got to coach the first female hockey player when she was in a Bantam B team from the city of New Ulm. I do, do do a lot of volunteer work. When I did retire from the city, I chose not to belong to a lot of organizations, but I do a lot of volunteer work for my wife's organizations, which I do enjoy doing. Background related with the city, I do understand the government and how it works. I've got about two, three seconds left, so I'm going to turn it over to Jane.
Okay, Jane Mayday-Holkey.
Thank you very much, Dave, and thank you, League of Women Voters. I reside at fifteen oh one South Valley Street. We've lived there for thirteen years, and I've lived in New Ulm for forty years. I worked at Kraft for thirty-three, and then I worked, worked for Cargill for four and a half, and now I'm back in New Ulm. I am, got, I have two children and three grandchildren. I still have a son that's employed here in New Ulm and is active in the business with his father. I have a four-year degree in organizational management and communications. I served twenty-three, little over twenty-three years in the Minnesota National Guard and retired from there. I am a veteran. I also am a lifetime member of the American Legion here in New Ulm. I volunteer for several different things. I taught Sunday School, and I did some Girl Scouts and some Boy Scouts when my kids were active in that. I also, I have done hospice at one time, and now I'm involved with the Numis House and I'm seeing that prosper. See what else. What brought me to New Ulm was Kraft, and I was only going to live here one year. And forty years later, I'm still here. I like and enjoy living in New Ulm. It's a very nice community.
Thank you, Jane. We will now begin with the question that both of you were, that was sent to both of you to answer and prepare for. And Jane, we'll start with you, because there are only two of you. We're going to be reversing the starting position here. Jane, if elected to this office, would you most like, what would you most like to accomplish in your term as a counselor?
It's kind of funny, because we talked about this question before, and actually, it's not about what I want. It's about what the residents and the constituents of Ward One in the city of New Ulm want. But ultimately, it's, I want to be their eyes and ears. I want to be able to listen to what they want and bring it forward. I would also like to see a few things like accessible housing. As I talk to people within the ward, the concern is for the ones on fixed income, what are they going to do when they can no longer live at home? And we do have an aging population, and we have some that are on fixed incomes. Social Security is their only income, and so they're really concerned about what's going to happen to them in the future. I have some, I want a safety concern with Valley Street as it enters into thirty-seven. I'd like to see that, and I'd like to see our community grow and become a more diversified community that's enticing to people to come and live here so that we can sustain this community going forward.
Thank you, Jane. Dave Christian, I'll repeat that question for you. If elected to this office, what would you most like to accomplish in your term as a counselor?
I'm going to try not to piggyback on Jane's answer, because we did discuss it in length outside before we came in. Similar to what she was, the same issues with New Ulm, the affordable housing, some growth, the industry. The one accomplishment, though, actually, I thought long and hard about is, if elected with Ward One, I'd like to, to earn the trust, respect of the members of that ward and continue to be a straight shooter. I mean, if the person wants the question answered, don't beat around the bush with it. Give them the answer. If you don't have the answer, send them to where they can get the answer, or dig into and get the answer for them. The rest I probably won't repeat, because Jane and I pretty much answered that outside.
Again, the phone number is 507-276-6211 should someone in the audience have a question that they would like. Well, earlier in their presentation, the present City Councilors were talking about all the committees that there are and that you can be a part of, and I only mentioned that you would be representing your ward and have two meetings a month. Now, the reason I said that was because there are so many committees to be on, if you really want to be. So this question is geared initially to you, Dave. City Council members also get appointed to a liaison position on the various city commissions or committees, working alongside various community volunteers serving on those commissions. If you get elected and could choose on which commission you would like to serve, what would it be?
If I happened to be elected, I would actually choose not to move forward and get reappointed to the Planning Commission, or the Zoning Adjustment Board, or the HPC. I spent eight years as that liaison to those boards. I'd look forward to, I mean, I've attended Park and Rec Commission meetings, numerous other committees. I would look forward to being appointed to that. I mean, if so be, the Council President appoints me to this commission, that's where you're going. But I would like to learn more about some of how, in depth, how the other commissions work.
Okay, Jane, what would your favorite commission be?
I'm open to any of them. I mean, as a new person with new eyes and ears, it would be an opportunity to learn more about our city and to bring more value back to, to the city, and to my ward, and to the City Council. So, I'm open to whatever is open out there and whatever I'm appointed to.
Okay. Next question would be for you, Jane. Are, what unmet infrastructure needs do you see the city facing?
I guess I look at affordable housing and affordable apartments for all spectrums, okay? I was shocked the other day when somebody said to me, "We have a friend that's moving to town, and he can't find a place to live here. He can't find a house available." And right now, in New Ulm, we either have above three hundred, or we have a hundred thousand or below, and they were looking for something in between and could only afford that. And we lose those people. And the fixed income is another issue. And we have buildings that are open, that I wish we could figure out what we're going to do with those buildings before they deteriorate and we can't do anything with them. So, there's adequate opportunities out there. We just have to figure out how we're going to approach them and solve for them.
Dave?
To me, the aging infrastructure in New Ulm, our roads and sanitary sewer, water lines and whatnot, constantly need the maintaining. I, I don't know if it's correct, ten, twelve years ago, the city chose to actually start having public works, do what's called reconstruct on streets, where all they do is subcut the street off, take the old asphalt off, new gravel, and bring it back in. A lot less expensive than a complete reconstruct with infrastructure. I, I know that the taxpayer does not like that, but the money and funds have to come from somewhere. With the, I'm going to touch a little on the Renew project. One of those things that it could have been used for was the infrastructure. Now, if you look at it from a councilman's, councilperson's point of view, that would have been a great opportunity if you could tell people, "Maybe some of this cost can be defrayed. Maybe you won't be assessed twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars on your property." It might have been a good time to add that on. Little late for that, but.
Next question, Dave, is, are there further steps the city can take to promote economic
Within guidelines, I think there is. I mean, the city does a great job with, but we do have the EDA, Economic Development Authority. We've got the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation. I think they do a good job with the, the budget constraints that they do have, trying to promote New Ulm, trying to buy industrial property, trying to keep the armory here. You do a great job, but at certain things, your hands are tied of what you can do for the general public. I think we're, I think we're doing the best we can.
Okay. Let's see, are there any further steps that you would like to say, see, Jane?
You know, I know they're doing a good job, but maybe we need to look at some of their, their guidelines and some of the city ordinances and things like that, to see if some things can be updated or changed. Maybe they were written twenty years ago and they don't apply anymore, and we need to look, revisit them and see what we can do to make those things a little bit more feasible and more open and accessible to industry and, and stuff coming in.
The next question would be for Jane. Do you think city taxpayers should spend one million dollars to buy land for an industrial
It's a tough one. Because we need that land, but I don't know if we need to spend that much money. It seems like an awful lot. But I think sometimes we don't have enough for the right industries to come. They want more than what we have. And so, how do you, how do you balance that out with so that we're not spending a fortune to get something that isn't going to give us any value for a long period of time? I mean, the price of land has gone outrageously high, and it's a tough, it's a tough question. I mean, it's, I don't think it's ever going to get cheaper. I can tell you that. That's the other thing. It's not going to get any cheaper. So, we're going to have to either bite the bullet or not have it available, and then that stifles us in the long term as well.
Dave?
To the taxpayer, I mean, spending money that doesn't directly benefit them, it always hurts. But I do agree that the city does need to move forward. I mean, we have lost in the past some bigger industries. We just don't have the land for them. The last project we, excuse me, we did, where Medallion Cabinetry is located, the industrial park, it's not big enough. Some of it doesn't have rail access. That's what companies are asking for. I mean, the city does have, has done a great job with financing at the end of the year, carrying over fund balances, and I do believe that at times, it takes City Council authorization, fund balance can be used for those type of activities.
Again, if anyone would like to direct their questions to the City Council, the candidates, the number to call is 507-276-6211. Dave, next question is, there is talk that it is time to revisit some of the city's plans, such as zoning, historic preservation, and the like. What is your opinion?
I do agree with that. I do believe that the zoning ordinance is still under reconstruction. It was started several years ago, that it is being rewritten. I do remember when the Commercial Senate Historic District was actually adopted twelve, fifteen years ago. Maybe it is time to tweak it a little bit. Was it too strong, where we limit what people can do with their property on Main Street or in some of our district, the South Broadway District, a private dwelling? The city actually dictates what kind of roof can you put on? What can I do to my porch? What type of windows would we like to see? I mean, if the general consensus out in the public is, maybe we need to update it or change it, give your counselor a call. Put it in their ear.
Okay, Jane?
I, I agree. I think we, we need to look at where we can make some changes and, and make it easier for people, and at the time they were written, I'm not saying they were bad. They were, it was probably the best, you know, good for the, what they were looking at. But things have changed, and we have, when you talk about historical preservation, I would love to see every building that's historically restored and preserved, but when they're not utilized for periods of time and they deteriorate on the inside as well as the outside, it's becomes a matter of feasibility and cost, and, and we then can't maintain them. I think it's, what really hits home is if you go to Europe and you sit in a church that was built in thirteen hundred and it's still active and still being used every Sunday, or it's been through two bombings, or, and we don't see that here, and, and they maintain it and they keep it and they use it and they update it and they, but when you don't do that, then it becomes, you can't, it's just too expensive. And I agree with the houses and the roofing and the porches, and our neighbor put a nice stairways on. The cities came and told them they couldn't, they had to take it off and change it, because it wasn't meeting right, and they weren't real happy, but little things like that, are they really important? Unless it's really an eyesore, why do we have to be so strict about property, personal property, and how they update it, as long as they're keeping it looking really nice?
Okay, I might also remind the candidates that if there is a rebuttal to something that is said after you have spoken, you can rebut it, just, so you know.
I don't think I'd give a rebuttal, just adding to it, what she's talking about.
Okay. But you have that option if you want to. I just thought I'd insert that here, so. Okay, do we want to go on then for the next question?
Next question.
Okay. Also, I might remind call-ins that the number is 507-276-6211. Jane, the biggest obstacle for employers currently is the lack of an adequate workforce. Is there a role for the city to play in addressing this issue?
It is, and it's a tough one. And it's not just our community that's seeing it as well, okay? And it is hard to draw. And I think part of ours is it's an industry where shifts are required, and a lot of people don't want to work those shifts anymore, and they don't want to put twelve hours in, and they don't like weekends, and it becomes a vicious circle for the employer, and it's expensive to hire people. People don't realize how much it costs to bring an employee in the door before they even start. And then they get into it two weeks and decide it's not what they want, because they got to work a couple twelve-hour shifts, or there is no flexibility if your child is sick, or you get into currents, things like that. So it makes it really hard. I don't know what we could do as a city, how we could do that. Most of the, it's, it comes down to your personal preference and what you want to do with your life and how you want to support yourself and your family. From my perspective, you know, and it's hard, because it's just not there anymore. It really isn't, and it's not just here in New Ulm. I mean, we saw the same thing when I worked at Cargill in the cities, you know? They didn't get what they wanted, they just move on to the next job. They're out there. They'll move. But we need to bring them in and keep them here, and part of that is housing for them when they come to town, instead of having to drive from Mankato, Medelia, Lake Crystal, Sleepy Eye, you know, and far out, because they can't find that housing that they need. And it's young kids, too. Rent, they can't afford it as a single person, you know, so that becomes an issue as well. So, there's a combination of things. It just isn't, I don't know how we could get, help get good employees to stay.
Dave, do you want me to repeat the question, or do you?
If you could.
I will. The biggest obstacle for employers currently is lack of an adequate workforce. Is there a role for the city to play in addressing this issue?
Again, I'm going to kind of sound like I repeat what Jane said. When you talk to these, I'm not going to knock the younger generation, but they want the eight-to-five job. I mean, my dad worked twenty-one years at Kraft Foods, shift work. But you hear that from Ferminich, Kraft Foods, Three M, the Medallion Cabinetry. People will ask two, three weeks. They don't like the shift work. Their life is too busy, on to something else. I mean, you see signs all over New Ulm for part-time help wanted, but this isn't the eight-to-five. This is the nine-to-midnight or the graveyard shift. It, it seems like they just don't want to do that. Life is too busy for it. And granted, times have changed, the kids, the extracurricular activities. I don't have the answer for that, or how the city could help with that. I mean, it's almost a personal choice. I choose not to work. I'm not going to work a shift work. I'm not going to do that. I will go somewhere else, find something else. I mean, lately, I, I do watch the job ads in the, in the Journal. There are some fantastic jobs out there, and some of these are repeats. Six months later, you'll see the same thing. Ferminich is looking again. Six months later, you'll see the same thing. Ferminich is looking again. People have come and gone and left. I'd have to do a lot of hard homework to find out what the city can do to help change that. I, I don't have the answer.
Okay. David, Harry Christian.
Had to say it.
Yeah, I had to say it. Do you support passage of funding for Renew? Why or why not?
I, I will go on record again as saying I will vote yes for the Renew project. I think it's, whether you're young or old, I, I understand fixed income or people that have well-paying jobs. For that little half percent, it's a great investment in New Ulm. Can it be looked at as a stepping tool? Professionals coming to New Ulm or employees, oh, New Ulm has this to offer. What a great park and recreation system. It can be used by all. The last one we did, the senior, excuse me, it's not the Senior Citizen Center anymore, it's Community Center. Sorry about that. Numerous times I've gone by there during the day and you see our elderly people using the facility, whether it's playing cards, just a gathering, the Meals on Wheels, going there for dinner. It benefited them also. That was part of the Renew, the tax. Our younger generation, you want the new facilities, you hear about water parks. I've talked to, I know it's a hundred people on the dome issue. They're all saying they're for it. If it's used, what the Renew Committee is telling them, it's gonna be used for. I myself think it's a great asset. If all the quirks can be worked out with School District eighty-eight, I think it'd be a great thing for winter time use in New Ulm. But again, I'm all for the Renew. I think it's a small investment, that half percent versus the city having to raise your tax levy by ten percent instead to do the same type of thing. You're giving the voter the chance to decide. Do we want this or don't we? I hope it goes through.
Jane Mayday.
I agree, and I'm on record as supporting it. I have supported it from the beginning. But in talking with people, you'd be surprised how many people don't understand how Renew works and are so worried that their taxes are going to go up. And so, I spent a lot of time explaining that it's not, it's gonna stay the same. You know, it's, you're not gonna get that increase. But if it doesn't pass and we choose to do this stuff, it could happen that your taxes are going up. So, like Dave said, it's the better of, of the deal. But people just don't understand. And that dome, I don't know how many people thought that was a crazy idea until you tell them all the revenue that it's gonna generate with people using it and tournaments that could be held in there in the wintertime and stuff like that. That brings people into our community for the weekend. They spend money, they, they stay at the hotels. So, there's a lot of revenue that's gonna be generated from that as well. And I don't think people look at the whole issue of it and what's all the benefits are. They just see, oh, we're gonna spend this amount of money, our money, on this. Why is it necessary? Okay? And don't look at all the positives that can come from it.
Jane, this is sort of linked in with that last question. Is too many, is, are there too many dollars spent on park and rec? In our community?
We have a great park and rec and it does draw and it will draw. And I can tell you that my grandchildren, they come from Mankato because they don't have a decent pool they can take their kids to and a zero entry will be even better yet because they won't go to Lake Crystal. So, I think that, no, we don't to some extent. But I think you have to look at the perspective from the person that's asking that question and how it impacts them. Because the younger who have the children who are gonna use it all the time, probably, that's a benefit, okay? It'll draw them. But people who are not gonna use it, the majority of the senior people, they can't understand why we need to spend that money on, on that infrastructure and on the baseball fields and on park and rec so much, so heavily. Why aren't, why aren't we spending it on something else that's more appropriate? You know, well, what is that? Well, I don't know. Well, then let's think about it, you know? And the committee did a lot of research before they came up with their suggestions. It isn't like, they just slapped it down and said, this is what we're gonna go with. They did their research as well. So, you have to trust that what they're giving us is what's best for our community.
Dave, is too much money spent on park and rec?
Personally, as a resident, I don't think it is. I mean, I do enjoy the park and rec system, what they have to offer people from the youth, from the little league batter to the high school hockey player. I, I mean, an example, piggybacking kind of what Jane had spoken about, Renew built our ice arena. Two sheets of ice. Not a lot of cities have that in Southern Minnesota. What has it brought to New Ulm? We've actually held state Peewee and state Bantam tournaments in New Ulm. Does that bring people who spend money? Of course it does. Restaurants, hotels, our downtown shops, tour the city while we're here. I, I think it's a great investment for it. I do believe that the city, they send out the yearly survey to random names that they pick out. I think the Park and Rec Act got high reviews off of it. I really don't ever remember somebody condoning that we spend too much money on park and rec.
Okay. David, what actions can the city take to maintain a vibrant downtown?
I believe the city today still has some dollars tied up in downtown. I think we still do. I don't know if it's fifty percent or we assist in a position through the Chamber of Commerce that, that when I was employed by the city, it was called the Main Street, we're trying to get retail into downtown. Um, what carrots can we dangle to attract them to it? I'm going to go back to, uh, seven, eight years ago, the city actually applied for the grant, which all downtown businesses, because they were located in the historic district, had a chance for ten cents on the dollar. Um, I think those are the right terms, to put the new roof on. Do I need to fix the infrastructure of my building? It wasn't just for the facade of it. You could use it for numerous things. So, I think the city has done a fantastic job trying to maintain the Commercial Center Historic District. And yet, maybe it's time to, do we have to loosen the string just a little bit so people can do what they wanna do? Maybe, maybe not.
Jane Mayday.
I think about when we talk about the downtown, I think about when I first came here and not too long ago when we had more than one shoe store, more than one dress shop, more than one men's shop. You had a choice. And now we're down to not too much of a choice, okay? And I wish we could bring some more of that back in, some more of the retail. A children's clothing store, other stores, to give some competition and to give a variety so people don't go out of town. You know, I, a lot of people tell me they go out of town because there's really nothing downtown for them. You know, and so they, they go out of town. And I think we need to see if we can't do that. Bring some businesses back into the downtown. That'll make it more viable for people to look at and to stay in town and to invest their dollars here instead of going to Mankato or the cities.
Okay, the next question will be for you, Jane. There is a collaborative effort underway to hold a citywide planning session early next month. How would you see the council's reaction and participation in addressing some of the findings?
I know that it's coming and I know it's like beginning of November or something. And that they will make recommendations to the council and I'm not sure how long they're gonna take to make those recommendations. I think that we have to look at it with open eyes and ears. Because they're gonna talk to a lot of people and they're gonna do a lot of input into it. And it might need some change to us or to our city, but we have to look at our future as well. And what this community is gonna be like ten, fifteen years down the road, twenty years down the road. And we gotta plan out a little bit, not just now, but plan out for the future as well. So that we stay a viable community that's going to ask or entice people to live here. You know, so it might be a surprise to some of us, maybe not. And I, if I'm not mistaken, somebody from the council is gonna sit in on that as well. So, they'll be a part of it.
Okay, David, I'll repeat that question for you because it's a little long. There is a collaborative effort underway to hold a citywide planning session early next month. How would you see the council's reaction and participation in addressing some of the findings?
I think our present council as past ones, I mean, to me, they'll take the information, absorb it. What can we do? How can we help? I, I don't see any negative coming out of it. You talk about a lot of concerned people. As Jane said, what is going to be the growth in New Ulm the next five, ten, fifty years out? I, I think the council will take that information and do what they can with it, betterment of the community.
Okay. Next question regards energy. Has the city or should the city be, I can't read this very well, again, addressing solar or wind energy to reduce costs?
They quite mean, should the city itself be looking into that for our own usage or for private?
Uh, that is what, the question is, doesn't state own usage or private?
I do know, it's a well-known fact that the city was in the process of trying to do the windmills and that kinda went sour on us. I'm all for that. Uh, we actually had some circumstances where residents themselves never checked with the city actually do have solar, some towers. We did receive calls on how high can they put a little windmill in their backyard. And again, if you go by our city ordinance, some of those items would not be allowed. It's time we do have to update or change them. An example, somebody having a twelve-foot solar panels that cost his garage to power his tools and equipment. I was the bad guy who had to go tell them that has to come down. You're over the height restriction. How do we do it? But maybe we do need to go back, look, look at the study. Even if it's just promoting it for the small individual residential dwelling, I'm for that with the energy.
Okay, Jane?
I agree because I've seen in other communities where people have solar panels on their roofs and you don't even know they're there. They've really changed in how they look and how they can be built right into your housing. And you don't even know unless they point them out where they're located. And so, if, if, if they can use that to help reduce their costs or to sell back to the city or whatever for energy, I don't see why we don't allow it. You know, I'm not so sure I want a wind turbine in my backyard or, because they're pretty big. But I don't see anything wrong with the solar panels on the, on the houses because I'm serious. I've seen some really nice ones and I had no clue they even had it. And the, um, energy company approached them and they get a cost reduction for putting them on their house and, and reduce their cost as well.
Okay. Well, Jane, I'm going to go ask you again first. What is an appropriate role for the city council to take in oversight of the PUC Commission?
I, I'm not sure how to answer that one. I really, I'd have to do my research on that one before I answered it. I'm, I'm gonna be flat out honest with you.
Okay. That's a fair answer. Dave Christian?
I need a repeat to absorb my.
No problem. I'll repeat it for you. What is an appropriate role for the city council to take in oversight of the PUC Commission?
Well, I, I do know the city government, even the city manager, the hiring practices and whatnot, and our human resource director, they are involved in that part. And how could the, the city council blend with the PUC Commission because they're under their own commission? I mean, it's a lot of misconception with people that PUC is an entity of New Ulm, but it's a separate entity of New Ulm. We both have a different set of rules. I'd have to agree with Jade. I'd have to do a little more research if the city can or do we have to change our, I mean.
Because I always thought the public utilities was separate and the, and the commission.
It's a separate entity, the PUC Commission, and yet the PUC does have to come to council on certain projects. I'd have to research that more myself. I mean, if, if the person is looking, should the PUC or should the city council have more control? I don't think our PUC has done a bad job. I think they're doing all right.
I think we need to know more about what they're looking for.
Okay.
Specifically.
I agree, Jane. Why would they want that?
I don't know.
I know, but that's what, that's what I'm asking.
Question for you.
That would help give a better perspective as what, what the question is all entailing.
Right. We can move on. No problem.
We agree. Let's table that one.
We'll table.
Okay.
We can do that.
Let's see. Dave, next question. Not just residents of Goose Town, but others who cross the railroad tracks on a frequent basis have a concern about the poor condition of the tracks as well as a safety concern as to the number of times trains barricade crossings by setting for extended periods of time. If elected, how would you commence addressing this situation?
I would go back to the drawing board as I do know that the city has contacted the railroad before to try to rectify that problem. And I'm going to agree that some timeframes were set when the gates could be closed, whatnot. They do push it to the limit, especially this time of year, the harvest time, the grain cars and whatnot coming in. I mean, the way I handle it, I just go to Seventh, the overpass bridge and boom, away I go. But I do know the city has contacted the railroad before. For a while, it got better. I suppose you would have to go back to that route again. It's, I do know that railroad was here first. They do have certain criteria they follow and that they have a right to do. But again, you could go back to the drawing board, contact them. How can we make this a little better?
Jane?
I drive all the way to Seventh. I mean, it's, I'm kinda like on the end, so like I gotta determine which way it's coming and how far it's there because I can't see the other end and I can't see the other end. So, sometimes I get down the street and I gotta make a U-turn and head back down the other way. So, I know that it's an inconvenience. There are a couple of them that are pretty bumpy when you go across them. The, um, the one that goes by New Ulm Steel and Drum is pretty bumpy. You gotta go really slow or you're gonna jiggle your car apart. But, um, for the most part, again, it's working with them. We don't, they're a business and so they were here first and they have, um, their guidelines and we just have to work with them. And there are times when I wonder how long they can park there and how long they can keep it crossed. And I'll tell you what's scary is when you see people crossing that don't wanna wait because they're walking. So, they crawl up the ladder, over the railcar, down and continue on their way. And that scares me. And I've seen it more than once. Where people get impatient waiting because they're walking and they're probably going home for their noon lunch and they only have so much time and so up, up over they go and down. And I sit there in my car and go, ugh, you know? One jerk and you could slip and we could have a major accident. So, there are some concerns. But again, it's working with the railroad. I mean, we can't tell them what to do and we can try, but we gotta work both ways.
Okay, I'd like to remind the listening audience to, if they have any more questions, to call two seven six six two one one. My next question dovetails into your comment, Jane. And that is, what can be done to improve public safety?
When it comes to the railroad, I don't know what we can do. I mean, they've got the signs, they've got the arms, they've got the stuff. The, my safety concern again is going out under thirty-seven. And I, you see it every once in a while. Here comes, you know, you're sitting there waiting to turn. You can't turn because you're gonna go to Hy-Vee, but you can hear the ambulance coming. And you look out in the street and they're just bumper to bumper all the way out to the bridge and you're thinking, oh, my gosh, you know? If that was coming for me, I'd be really upset if it has to sit there and wait, you know? So, people are pulling out of the way and trying to make room and it's not easy. If we could make that marked off as no parking and enforce that, that would be really nice. I think that for the most part, most of our streets are pretty safe. People adjusted to the roundabouts and didn't think they were gonna be real safe and we've adjusted to those. So, overall, we do a pretty good job. I think some of our sidewalks need to be fixed. I think some of our sidewalks need to be fixed. Um, if you're an avid walker and you walk on the sidewalks and it's at dusk, you kind of do this little trip once in a while because they're not all level or they're cracked and broken. Maybe we could look at enforcing that a little bit better so that people don't fall when they're out walking and stuff like that. But otherwise, right now, unless somebody brings me a specific issue, I really don't have anything.
David?
I, again, I agree with Jane. I think our public safety in New Ulm is upper echelon to a lot of communities. We're a small, tight-knit community. People in New Ulm, believe it or not, still don't lock their doors when they go to work. They must feel safe. I mean, our police department is great, our fire department is great, they do an excellent job. I do agree with her on the sidewalk issues. I've had a couple of residents, could the city step up the program? I do know now that they pick out a section of town each year. Uh, city employee walks it, tags it, it gets marked, you have X amount of days to do it. Sometimes it can be a lengthy process because this is the way the city has to do it. We just can't go out and repair it. You have to give them ample time, send them a second notice. A lot of times the residents think, well, we told you about it, it's still not done, three to six months later. Le- legal-wise, sometimes it takes that long, but overall, I think the general public safety in New Ulm is good.
I have another question that dovetails right into public safety to some degree. And this one would be for you, David, initially. What can be done to improve Highway fourteen and Highland Avenue? That intersection and the num- and, and the number of accidents that happen there?
I, I suppose that the city would, the council would take action, contact the hu- someone, our, I don't remember who the representative is for our highway department, I believe it's located over in Mankato. Start the process, I know they're not big on putting a stop and go light there. Does the city or the state want to see another roundabout there? I don't know. Until I would look at their long range, paying for that highway extension. I do remember the roundabout put in my Menards, they refused because of the airport. The, I'm going to call it the airport flyway, they would not let a frontage road go from Walmart to a Menards. No, we're going to send people back out onto the highway, put it in a roundabout and go from there. Uh, the exact answer, I don't have it. But I, I don't know if the city could order the highway department or the state of Minnesota to put some kind of control in there. I, I don't believe we could.
Jane, do you have a comment on that?
Uh, it's not my favorite intersection if I'm going to go that way to that end of town. Um, you can sit there for a very long time at periods of times to not get across. And then you see people that take that risk because they gotta get across and that's how we have accidents happen. Again, I don't think, because it's a state highway, isn't it under the control of the state? And maybe we need to work with our legislature and with the Minnesota Highway Department and um, see what we can have done. And I'm sure they're going to do a study and then that study will have to be reviewed and then the funds will have to be appropriated and it'll take a while, it's not going to happen next week. Uh, those things all take time. But they're definitely, I think with the school being out there now, there definitely has to have something done. Because we have kids that drive to school and it's a busy, busy intersection. And uh, they're in a hurry, um, and like most people are. And so I don't want it to see, come to the fact that we, we lose somebody's life um, at that intersection. And it could very easily happen because you're coming up the hill from, when you come from Cashwise. So you can't always see either. That's kind of at the top of the hill there. Um, makes the development difficult sometimes and especially if the sun is in the right position, it's, it's hard to see. So we'll just have to work with this um, state and the, the city, I don't think has anything to do with it. It's not, it's a state highway. Even though we're going to intersect it, I think the state has, would have the control.
What neighborhood issues are important to you, Jane?
I'd just like to see nice, clean, orderly neighborhoods that are taken care of and well-maintained. Um, I think that for the most part, New Ulm has a really wonderful, their lawns are really nice and flowers and things like that. We do have some that don't. Um, and that again is another legal process that takes a long time. But working with your city and your neighbor, start with your neighbor and then move on up through the city council and the city and see what can happen. But I think it, it, you don't want an eyesore in your community. I mean, New Ulm has a lot of events that go on, we draw a lot of people into this community. So, don't, and don't think they don't drive around and look at all the different homes and stuff while they're in between sporting events and things that are going on. Because they do. Or they're going somewhere so they take the long way and check out New Ulm and see what it looks like. So I think they should be maintained and um, if they're not, then maybe the city has to fine them and have it taken care of and they pay the fine.
Dave Christian, would you like to answer that as well?
Overall, I think the city, I mean, we do get a lot of compliments from tourists that come in, how clean we are. Uh, but again, I do agree with Jane. When I was a, the building official with the city, I had, or the city had what was called the top ten list. Those would be ten properties in New Ulm on our top ten that we were constantly, month after month, going back, sending the letters, going to court with them, not abiding by the rules or city ordinances. Can we expedite the process? Probably not, the law is the law, this is the way it has to be. I mean, sometime, you don't want to see a neighbor confront their neighbor. Sometimes that is what it takes. And in the past, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I mean, I, I would like to see in our zoning ordinance, we do have criteria for maintaining your yard, maintaining your sidewalk and whatnot. I've been asked about it, was brought to the table of ten, twelve years ago. Do we need to go back to having what's called the blight ordinance? Or maybe we could expedite the process when siding is falling off a home, the shingles are falling off, the windows are broken and people are still living in the dwelling? And believe it or not, in that top ten list, New Ulm does have some of those residents. I have one located across the street from me that I ordered boarded up ten years ago. And it's still sitting there as it is, and yet we don't have the ramification. You know, some, the law protects people, I mean, your home is your castle. If I choose to have plywood on the windows, I can. And the city doesn't have any thing to fall back on as far as a blight ordinance to attack that. Maybe it's time to look into it. I mean, there's not many, don't get me wrong, the, the city is, I'm going to say, in excellent condition for our viewers that come to the city. But to get to those, maybe we have to go a step forward.
Perfect example is I have a neighbor, but during Oktoberfest, the, the wagon with the horses that took him on comes right down our street with all the visitors and goes around and what do they see, you know? It's like, oh, can we just put a big picture up? Like the Property Brothers or whatever and then just close it so it looks nice, you know? You just don't want people to see that, get that image.
Well, I have one last question here that sort of is a little bit of that. And maybe we could make this not a real long answer, I hate to do this to you, but we're, I would like to get this question in as well. What measures would you recommend to address fixing properties such as the Market Plots Mall, Georgia's Ballroom and the Junior High? I know that could be a long question, but that will be your last question.
Your turn, Mike.
Jane?
Okay. Here we go. Beautiful buildings, kind of have some historic value, haven't been used for how long? Have been just sitting there, empty, all winter long, all summer long. Probably just the utilities, the bare minimums, running, and they deteriorate. Now comes the money part. And how do you find somebody that's going to have the money to invest, to bring it up to code? To restore it to its natural state and make it a viable place? At almighty dollar, which is really hard. So maybe when buildings start to be empty for a year or two, maybe we start talking with that owner. What's your, what, what, what are you having plans? What do you have for plans? What are you going to do with the building? Are you looking for somebody? Do you need help looking for somebody? Are you going to sell it? What do you want done with it? Instead of waiting till ten, fifteen years and now we've got this building that we really don't want to lose, but we can't do anything with it because we can't afford it.
David?
I'll, I'll try to touch on a little more, but in, in total agreement with what Jane had said. The Georgia's Ballroom issue, it's going to come back to the city again, it's going to go through the cycle again. And what are we going to do with it? Do we raise the building? I mean, it's going to take, it's in the Commercial Center Historic District. Myself, the last time I was in the building, I would have no problem as a building official declaring it unsafe. Even though the bare minimum was done to it, over the years I have watched it. One of these days the roof will come down, declaring it unsafe, okay, let's start the process, what do we have to do? The Market Plots Mall, I mean, it's no secret that the city has been through the legal system, it's changed ownership. What has happened to it? Who owns what underneath, above? I don't have the answer what to do with the Market Plots Mall. I believe it would take a lot of staff time to find out. I, I know staff spends time on it now, just keeping it up to the code issues with the sprinkler system, the fire doors, the steps being cleared. It's an ongoing issue. I don't have the answer for that. I battled it for seven, eight years and never did come up with the answer, what we can do about it.
Okay. Well, now it's time for your one-minute closing statement. And since we started with David with the opening statements, we will start with Jane Mayday Honky for her closing statement.
I'll keep this short. I just want to thank the League of Women Voters and the New Ulm Journal for this evening. And I ask the residents of Ward One to please consider me when they go to the polls this fall and let me be your voice and your eyes for the next three years.
And David, Harry Christian?
I also want to thank the League for the opportunity this evening. Uh, one thing I'm going to touch on, I, I, I would really enjoy being elected as the representative for Ward One. But as Jane and I talked outside, it's re- it, it's probably terrible, I'm a candidate, I'm running against Jane. It's not really about us, we both agreed to it that it was, it's what's best for the people in Ward One. Who's going to represent them, that's what it's about. Who do they think can do the best job? The voters will decide on November eighth and November ninth will know.
Yep.
Probably strange to hear that coming from the opponent, but I mean, we talked about it.
It's the truth, I mean, we're, we're running because we want to represent the ward. It's about the people, not about us, and they'll make that choice.
And we were in agreement with that, believe it or not.
Well, first of all, the League would like to thank both of you and our other candidates that were here this evening, even though they're, are running unopposed, who participated in tonight's meeting. A special thanks also to New Cat and to Kay and Yujie for their live presentation this evening. And a special thank you to the New Ulm Journal for partnering, partnering with us this year. Thanks to the League members who are here in attendance, supporting all of the people who, so we can put on this forum, forum. Our timekeepers tonight were Harriet Erberg and Annie Wilcheck. Our screeners were Mary Ellen Domeyer and Peg Sundell, and there maybe were some others that helped out too. And our voter service, service chair who is not here this evening was, is Jeannie Hinsman, but she did a lot of the previous legwork on this. And Peg Sundell has been sitting in for her tonight. If you need an absentee ballot, contact the Brown County Auditor's Office if you will not be able to vote. And again, remember to vote on Tuesday, November eighth. The polls will open at seven AM and close at eight PM. And in Ward One, the polling places are the United Church of Christ for Precinct One and for Precinct Two, it's Redeemer Lutheran Church. Good evening, everyone.